We are live at Yonkers City Hall, exactly at the Chamber, Council Chamber. This is where everything happens, where decisions are made, where people speak, where they voice their opinions, and engage with the people, like the Council President, people that we vote to represent us. Thank you for taking the time.
Thank you. I know we had a prior meeting date scheduled, but thank you for being understanding. You told me to speak up, so are you hearing us well?
Yeah.
Great.
You know, things happen. Sometimes we have schedules, things happen in our lives, and we have to change accordingly. But I thank you for making yourself always available for our interviews since that very first day.
Remember that?
At Casa Royale.
Absolutely.
I interviewed the Council President for the very first time when she came victorious in her campaign.
That seems like so long ago, and it was only three years.
Yeah, I was asking your assistant, Maria, said, "How long has it been?" Because it felt like it's been forever.
I know.
It's three years.
Three years.
A lot of work was accomplished, Council President?
Absolutely, but you know, you always feel like there's more to be done, and that's where I'm at. When you first take on something new, it's like growing pains, you learn how to do the job, and then you start the work of actually doing the job, and before you know it, it's like, okay, it's almost time for reelection. So that's the point we're at. We're running like a well-oiled machine, and next year will be time for election.
Now, Council President, before we go further, I want you to know that even though you see me here,
Yes.
it's because I'm engaging with the audience, it's not because I'm being disrespectful to you and not paying attention to you.
I understand.
Okay? We are live. People will be asking questions. As I always ask you, the audience, disagreement is not an issue. How we present our disagreements sometimes is the issue. So ask your questions, present your disagreement politely and respectfully. Otherwise, you know that we don't have tolerance for nonsense. We want to make Yonkers Voice a platform where people like Council President and others feel comfortable that they come here to talk about issues, answer questions, but not to be disrespected and insulted.
Thank you.
I think it's fair, right?
Absolutely, absolutely.
What was your main focus when you got elected? I remember your campaign, I remember the promises. I fully understand that sometimes promises are made during the campaign that cannot be fulfilled, because those promises don't depend on one person.
Right.
They depend on the body, on all the council people, or whatever. But what was your focus back then? What did you see that was more important, and have you accomplished it?
So what I see is still important, and it's still something that we're working on, but in legislation, there are things that happen outside of the city that impact the city. One of the huge things that residents in the city of Yonkers are asking for is good cause eviction legislation to go along with affordable housing ordinance. And what we've seen is the five jurisdictions outside of Yonkers that have enacted good cause legislation have been either challenged in the court, or stricken down, and stricken down, or removed from legislation, from law. So the city of Yonkers, of course, as an attorney, you want to ensure that when you pass laws that they won't either be challenged, or that they will in fact be found to be legal. So we're waiting to see what New York State does with good cause legislation. I know the budget is still late, and that's one of the points of contention between the governor and the Senate and Assembly, is whether or not the New York State budget will have housing legislation to include or exclude good cause eviction.
Now, housing is a serious problem in Yonkers.
Absolutely.
You know...
Throughout the state, throughout the country.
Yes, it is, but I'm focused in Yonkers.
Yes.
I'm focused on the seniors of Yonkers, families that have been living in Yonkers for generations and generations that now have to leave Yonkers, because they can no longer afford Yonkers. Yes, I interviewed the mayor, I interviewed you and other elected officials. They're very proud of what Yonkers is becoming, look at the building here, look at new building there. But at the end of the day, what about those that have been in Yonkers for all these years that now have to move out of the city that they love, because they cannot longer afford it?
So I think part of what causes or gives rise to affordability is the supply and demand. When there's less supply, there's more demand, and landlords can charge higher rents. When there's more supply in the market, meaning more available housing, the rent is cheaper, because you have options. So you can shop around and say, "Well, that apartment's nice, but this one is cheaper, so I'll go with this one." However, if there's only one apartment available, the landlord says, "It's $2,500, take it or leave it, because I know I can find someone that will pay the money." So that's why Yonkers is committed to building more housing, so that the market will have options for renters with affordable rent, as well as building affordable units throughout the city. So there's a mix. Not all units are going to be affordable. There are some luxury units that are built throughout the city, but there are also some units, like the senior housing that's coming up, La Mora, on Seymour Street in Yonkers, which I believe the groundbreaking will be sometime later this year, for seniors, and it is by income, affordable housing.
Now, yesterday, there was, I would call it a town hall, a meeting with lots of seniors that somehow their rent is going to be doubled.
Was that in Tarrytown?
No, talk about Yonkers.
In Yonkers?
Okay, they were very concerned. Unfortunately, I was not able to be there. Are you familiar with that problem, the rent?
No, I didn't see, I didn't see anything about a town hall.
Yes, on Willow Street?
Willow Street.
In the church, in Willow Street?
Okay.
Yeah, they're very upset because of the rent, they went from this much to double, basically. They've been evicted from the apartments, some say illegally.
Oh, wow.
Okay. Lot where they parked their cars, their cars had been removed, towed. Okay, I will find out about who is the landlord.
The landlord.
I think they just moved from management company to a different one.
Okay, this sounds like, I can't think of the street, Waverly.
Waverly.
Waverly Street, yes. So I'm familiar with some residents that live in the property, and I know they did change ownerships. And one person that I assisted, they tried to raise the rent $500. They went to court and said, "This person owes X amount of dollars based on this illegal rent increase." And we assisted the person that got Section 8 and moved to another property, but that was an ongoing issue with the new landlord trying to increase the rent. That's another good cause eviction proponent, that rent increases can only increase by either the Consumer Price Index, or 3%, whichever is higher, but that's a huge component that landlord, that tenant protection advocates are fighting for to protect residents in place that their rent does not increase substantially, and that they can continue to live in their apartment.
Now, you are not just the City Council President, you are also an attorney.
It made me think of the Hair Club for Men. I'm not only the president.
Yes.
I'm a client, remember that?
You're a client. You are also an attorney.
Yes.
And you know laws, you know how things work, behind the scenes. The person that you're speaking of, that got the voucher, actually got an attorney to represent her. That attorney that represented her, I believe, now is representing the management company.
Oh, wow.
I believe, I could be mistaken, because you know, sometimes what people bring to us is exactly not what actually happened. But let's say for the sake of argument, that that is a fact. Is that ethical, that the attorney that represented a client is now representing the people that he was...
So as an attorney, what you have to do with that is called, first, you have to disclose, like, "Hey, I represented someone that was against you," and then they have to sign a waiver to say, "Yes, although you represented someone that had a conflict, I'm okay with you being my attorney." So it's not illegal or unethical, but you do have to disclose that conflict before beginning representation.
So we don't know if that was disclosed.
Right.
You know, sometimes people have a tendency to tell you half of the story and forget certain parts, so we don't know.
But they should likely know that if they were, if they had their attorneys representing that, hey, this lawyer was once on the other side, so hopefully they know.
Should the federal government, Council President, be involved in those things and help the people in those conditions, in that type of a housing?
Um, it depends. So if that type of housing has some sort of federal subsidy, that would be the jurisdiction that the federal government could have. Most times, the federal government tries to have a handoff approach and leave most of the laws to the states to govern themselves, so that would be more of a state issue. And then, of course, there's like the trickle-down from the state to local government, which would be county or the municipality where the person lives. So most of our tenant rights and laws are state laws. When you have subsidies connected, like the HUD giving money for rental assistance, like a subsidy, then they have certain laws and policies that have to be followed, and then there could be state laws, as well as state subsidies connected. So there could be multiple jurisdictions and laws involved.
Now, Council President, I don't know if you have seen the rallies and the protests against Israel for the situation that is going on in Gaza at this point.
Yes.
People are concerned with what's going on in Gaza.
Yes.
There is thousands of people dying, including children.
Yes.
Women, elderly people. We understand that a lot of people died on the other side as well. And there is a group, I believe, West Bank, they're trying to, maybe I'm on the wrong terminology, but there is a group, actually, they were here on the last meeting. They are asking you and the council for a resolution.
Yes.
What is the problem? What is the friction that you cannot get this resolution going? Is that, let me, allow me to... Is that because there is interests in Yonkers on the Israeli side, investors, that would probably give a hard time if you and the council were to take a position against Israel? Because people want to know what's going on, and we are not getting any answers. You are satisfied with the resolution that was submitted prior, but the people are not satisfied. So the people that you represent, the people that voted for you, when I say you, I mean...
The entire council.
Yeah, the entire council.
Yes.
They are not happy. Can you justify your position and the council's position, and why are you satisfied with the work that you did?
Okay, so as you mentioned early on, and I believe some people have the misunderstanding that one person on the council can make a law pass, and that is not the case. In order to pass any resolution, any law, any ordinance here in the city of Yonkers, you need to be able to count to four. You need the majority to support it. There has been a group that has been coming to essentially every meeting from January asking for a resolution, a ceasefire resolution. And that group was sending emails and showing up to meetings. I drafted a resolution that I knew could get seven votes on the council, and essentially passed. That was a peace resolution, this was February, beginning of February, and the entire council appeared to support it, the majority of the council appeared to support it from the responses I got back. When I presented it to the group, they said, "No, we want legislation that calls for a ceasefire." And so we came back to discuss. Again, we have, as a council, to agree upon legislation, to answer, to the wording of the legislation. So that's where the contention came in, the wording of the legislation. You asked a question about whether it is because of interest or political donations, and to that I say, "No, the city of Yonkers has residents from both sides." And in the unique position that I have, I'm elected citywide, so I'm oftentimes in the position where I am representing conflicting interests. So I have residents in the city of Yonkers who are pro-Palestinian, and I have residents in the city of Yonkers who are pro-Israel. So it's how do you satisfy both people? Where is there a middle ground? So we went back and forth between the council with language that could garner four votes in order to pass, because the question that I continuously asked is, "Do you want us to propose a resolution that is going to be voted down, or do you want a resolution that we can pass?" And the answer was, "We want to pass a resolution, not just present a resolution." So in order to garner the four votes of members of the council, the resolution that we had on the agenda last Tuesday was the compromise that I could get to four with. The resolution that was presented and proposed by the group, I had members of the council that said absolutely not, and I could not count to four in order to pass that resolution.
So anything that happens in this room, in a meeting, it's public information?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
So you had a meeting, and some people did not vote for a stronger language in that resolution?
No.
No?
So what happens is, members of the Democratic Party, we caucus. That's when the five of us will come together and we'll have discussion about proposed legislation. That's not considered a public meeting, because it's a caucus of party members. Generally speaking, we could not have a meeting with, let's say, myself, another Democrat, and the two Republicans, because that would need to be an open meeting, or else it would violate law. Because you can't have a meeting with the majority of the council without it being open to the public. But one of the exceptions to that rule is caucusing, and it's when you meet with your fellow party members. So when I say that I met with the council, it's during our caucus meetings, which generally happen prior to council meetings on Tuesday, when we come in about 5 o'clock, 5:30, we'll sit down and we'll meet and discuss. So the resolution that was on the calendar, on the agenda, rather, was something that was a collaborative effort between myself and another member of the council, who at the time was of the position of supporting the resolution that was proposed by the pro-Palestinian group. So tweaking the language to say, "Hey, I'm, I want to condemn Hamas." We agreed, okay, so the language we want to do is condemn what Hamas did on October 7th. So the first wording, or first line of a whereas was, "Hamas violently attacked." When we sent the resolution to the group that asked for the ceasefire, they made edits. And one of them was taking out the word "violently" when it came to Hamas attacking. And then their next sentence was, "And Israel responded and caused immense..." I forget the exact words, but my position was, if we're going to be neutral and remove adjectives that describe, as an attorney, wording means everything, if we're going to remove adjectives that describe one group's acts, then we're going to remove adjectives that describe another group's acts, because I represent both sides, and I am not willing to go to the position of, "This group was wrong, that group was right," because everyone is entitled to their opinions and their beliefs, and I'm not the judge or jury to say, "You were wrong, you were right, and I'm condemning you," except for when it came to what we all agreed upon, was that Hamas violently attacked October 7th.
But we do understand that this issue in the Middle East, Gaza, started long before October 7th.
Yes.
It's nothing new. It didn't start that day. That was just, you know, the day that we saw the new... Now, according to you, what is your opinion? If somebody asks you, "Council President, do you think a genocide is taking place in Gaza?" What would you give me? What would the answer would you give me?
I would say that I don't have an informed decision about whether or not there's a genocide taking place. Prior to this group coming to ask us, this is an international issue, it's not one that the city council normally undertakes, so all I had was a purview of what was going on, right? So when the group came and asked, "Hey, we want a resolution," I had to educate myself on the topic. And I did that trying to find new true sources that weren't, because there will be sources that will have one-sided opinions. And so I'm watching news, I'm reading articles, to figure out what's going on. We could trace this back to the 600s, history going all the way back. That's not what the council did in trying to come to this ceasefire resolution, because it was about the conflict that was going on in Gaza now, which started with the October 7th event.
What will it take for you to get the information that you need in order to formulate an opinion that you need to formulate? How many thousands more have to die? And when I'm talking about that, because I am pro-life, okay?
Yes.
I'm concerned with deaths, regardless of who's dying, regardless of who's killing who, that needs to stop.
I agree. So I do agree that the innocent civilians that are being killed, that that is problematic, and that Israel, I can't say whether it's deliberate, whether it's not, I don't know that. I'm not, haven't formulated that opinion to say, "They're absolutely going out and attacking innocent men, women, and children." So I'm not willing to say that without more information.
But...
But what I do say is that killing of innocent men and women in this war is a tragedy.
Isn't Israel the state that brags about having one of the best intelligences in the world?
I can't...
But we heard that many times.
I haven't heard that.
You have never heard that?
No.
Then I will have to send you something that they talk about their security, about their intel services. So it seems awkward that children are being killed, like the World Kitchen did the other day. That's terrible, okay? That's terrible. But we cannot stay here and dwell on this forever, we need to move on. Now, I have, we live, and we have a question here from Mr. Hector Santiago. He says, "Has she referred anyone to the Human Rights Commission? Can she speak a bit about that commission and we, and what we do for Yonkers?"
Okay, absolutely. I have referred, off the top of my head, at least one individual comes to mind. In addition, I have proposed legislation after several events happened going back last year. This is probably the third time that I've proposed legislation that deals with human rights and strengthening the rights here in the city of Yonkers when it comes to our residents. And when we talk about the politics of Yonkers and getting to four, this item has been in committee three times and has expired, because it hasn't been brought out of committee to bring to the floor, to bring to a vote. And I won't stop until it is brought to a vote. So if it dies in committee again, I will propose it again. But the Human Rights Commission is tasked with dealing with issues of whether a person feels discriminated against based upon any of their protected classes, and our Human Rights Commission essentially presently does referrals to like the county based on what they'll investigate. So they'll get a call, and a person will say, "Hey, I feel like I've been discriminated against because I'm my race, or because of my gender, or marital status, or familial status." And the Human Rights Commission will take down additional information, and then likely refer that to either Westchester County or New York State Human Rights Commissions for further investigation.
Now, Hector Santiago was the last question, because we have other people from him. He says, "When it came to Ukraine and Russia, the council spoke on that. There was no asking for more information about Ukraine and Russia, but now that it comes to Israel..."
I can't speak for the entire council, I can speak for the...
No, no, they, of course, you're the one sitting here.
And I did not, right, I did not. The council passed the resolution, I believe, I believe, but I did not give input one way or another in the resolution that was presented at all.
Nothing at all. There is another hot issue going on, and this is in reference to 900 North Broadway. I was here in, I think, three weeks ago, or give or take, when the residents came to speak in opposition, that cutting trees and certain things were already taking place without proper authorization. What is the status of that, CP?
I believe there was a stop order put in place.
When?
I can see, shortly after, so the emails and the social media posts were about a week, maybe closer to now.
Yeah, the trees were being cut.
So I got, I also proposed legislation to that same point. There were two pieces of legislation. One was with regard to senior developments in parking, because if my proposed legislation, which is still in committee, was that if a developer proposes to build a senior building that is not subsidized by federal or state funds, meaning it's not going to be an affordable housing unit, that the parking requirements be the same as if it was a family building, meaning one parking space per apartment bedroom. And because it was a recommendation of the zoning committee with a lot of potential developers proposing to build senior housing, because the parking requirement is less, and whether or not, once these buildings are built, will they really house seniors, was my biggest concern. So we could say, "I'm building a senior building," and then the people that move in, are they really seniors? Who's going to do that follow-up? Who's going to ensure that they're in fact seniors when there's no, let's say, income eligibility or age eligibility agency that's enforcing? So that was one piece of legislation. And the second part, which was also a recommendation from zoning, was about clearing and excavating the land before site plan approval. And both of those items, at the time of that vote, were on the agenda, set for a vote, and because I don't have the authority to bring it out of committee, so we... The process of city council, if we could take a step back. Every other Friday, which happened this morning, there's a leadership meeting with the administration, the majority and minority leaders, and the city council president, when we bring forth all legislation that council members are proposing. And at that time, we have, it's followed by a Tuesday Rules meeting. We caucus, and we say, "Hey, this item will go to a committee, this item will go straight to the agenda." When we put an item in committee, you then discuss it in committee, and when you feel like it's ready to bring to a vote, the committee members say, "Yes, I'm okay with bringing it out of committee." If item goes to committee and you don't have the majority, if it's a five-member committee, you need three people. If it's seven, you need four to say, "Yes, I'm okay taking this out of committee," it goes nowhere. So my item is in committee, and if three people don't say, "Yes, bring it out," then it stays in committee and can potentially die. So the day of that vote, my items were set to come to a vote, but other council members wanted to leave it in committee, because they did not want, I can only assume, did not want that those, that legislation to impact the proposed development. Because if that legislation had passed, then those laws would apply to that development. So I did not have the votes to bring that legislation out of committee. So 900 North Broadway, passed by a vote, I believe, of four to three. Myself and two other colleagues opposed it. I just said why I did, because it says it's a senior development, but how do we know for sure that it's going to be? So that was one of the reasons why I opposed.
So the trees that were removed the other day, were they authorized to remove the trees or not? And if they were not authorized, what are the consequences?
So that's the buildings department. What I was advised, because I did forward all of the emails I received, that removing trees from private property is not illegal, and you don't need a permit to do, but it was the heavy machinery that was brought to the site that caused the Jim Gibbons to go out to the site to take a look and put a stop order on.
It's not illegal to remove trees from private property?
So if you own a home and you wanted to take down your tree, you would not need a permit to remove a tree from your property?
But this is not a regular home, this is construction going on, and we know about the plants.
So it was private, hear me, it is not illegal to remove trees from your private property. You don't need a permit to remove a tree from your property, but to do the heavy machinery and work that they were doing is something different, and that's why there was a stop order put in place.
Last meeting that I was here discussing this on the agenda, Councilman Anthony Morante articulated that he was, how would I say it, upset, maybe not, but maybe not the correct word, but he didn't agree with the way things were done. He felt like the decision was taken without him knowing, he was not even there to vote. Was that your understanding, or no?
Um, I don't think that's what he was saying.
So what did he say?
But again, I talk about caucusing. Caucusing happens between the Democrats and usually the two Republicans, because if we invite, let's say, myself, the majority whip, the majority leader, and someone, minority leader, let's say, that's four people, that should be a public meeting. If it's just myself, the majority leader, the majority whip, and every Democrat, we could meet in private without it being a public meeting. So I believe what the council member was referring to is meetings happen between the Dems that he was not privy to, not that decisions were made without him. I know he did say that he is the councilperson of the district, and that the developer had not reached out to him, and that the sponsor of the legislation was someone other than the person of the district, when usually we defer to the person of the district.
I have heard Mr. Anthony Morante said in the past that, you know, "Rude, they don't tell me things." Okay? Like, "This is a family, the council is a family, dysfunctional family." Well, you might be laughing, but the people out there do not laugh about that.
A dysfunctional family?
In a way, for lack of a better term, because we see what's going on. I've been here many times... I've been here many times at the meetings and I have seen the engagement. And it seems like sometimes the council body, not talk about yours, I'll talk about in general. They forget that they actually work for the people, okay? And when they disagree and they go at each other and undermine each other's work, we, the people, get the invoice. We the one who paid for all this bickering among yourselves.
Well, you say amongst yourselves, it's not including me.
No, 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 again, it's not about you. I'm talking about in general terms, not you. Do we have a dysfunctional council?
I wouldn't say we have a dysfunctional.
What would you say we have?
I would say we have a council with strong personalities that don't always agree. That's what I would say.
But agreeing is not always necessary.
Right.
As long as we disagree, but then at the end of the day, we come to a conclusion and we move forward for the best of the people of Yonkers. Would you agree with that and with me?
Absolutely.
I have to bring something, okay? We don't have to go too deep into that. But I received emails and one of the questions was this. The situation between the prior majority leader.
Which we're not discussing.
Guys, I asked.
You knew that before we got here, Rue. That was one of the reasons why the meeting was pushed back a month.
Look, I knew and I respect you a lot, but my obligation is.
To try it?
To try.
And you did.
And I did. Now, responding or not responding, it's your, you know, when I say you or anybody else, I ask. Because I don't want people to say, you're working with them, that's why you didn't ask.
Oh, because all the softball questions that you do at other people?
I'm asking you very softball questions.
Really? Okay.
And that's because we're friends.
Yeah, uh huh.
No.
You could be a part of our dysfunctional family.
That's why I don't run for that.
Listen.
Council President, if you knew back then what you know now, you have, would you have chosen the same path?
Absolutely.
You wouldn't have done anything different?
Nothing in my life has ever been easy and I wouldn't expect this to be easy. Coming into it, I probably would say the biggest challenge would be, I guess, the being the public figure when people feel as if they can say whatever comes to mind because I'm a public figure and I can't react. And I'm not supposed to react. I'm not supposed to feel anyway when at the end of the day, we're all human. So there have been occasions, for example, someone disagreeing with the position I take and calling the office and calling myself the N-word.
No, definitely.
Right, that's unexpected, but people feel as if, or attacked my family or attacked my husband, all because, it's like, you can have your opinion and that's fine, but we can disagree. But when it comes to attacking my marriage or getting personal, that's not.
That happens often or it happens with a particular person?
Um, it happens with more than one particular person. But one thing that, one thing I can say about being in this position, it has taught taught me life lessons. To let things roll off your back, to not react, to just let people say what they want and not react. Because that's how you have to learn to be, especially in these positions. Because people will say things that may hurt your feelings, but that's not really what it's about for me. It's like, if you were to say something about my child or say something about my marriage, it's like, it has nothing. What does that have to do with being council president?
Absolutely not.
Right? So it's the personal attacks, comments like, oh, just because you passed the bar doesn't mean you're smart. And it's like, what? Apps, like feeling discredited because people disagree. And one thing I said to my son when he was going to first grade about his education and I stand on and I tell every child that I come across. Your education is your building blocks and once you build it, no one can blow it down. And I compared it to the story of the three little pigs and the one who built his house on bricks, no one could blow it down. That's how I feel about my education. So.
Your foundation.
It's my foundation that no one can take away from me. I earned it. No one gave it to me. So when people say, oh, well, you're not smart, you just memorized a bunch of things. Well, that's not what it took to pass the bar exam. Of course, I had to memorize a bunch of things, but then I had to apply them to a specific fact pattern that I got on the spot. Like, so it's disheartening, but I guess it comes with the territory. And one thing I've learned is to let things roll off my back.
You know, Council President, I was here right across from where we are now. You were sitting right behind me. You gave an emotional speech.
Absolutely.
Okay, in regards to.
It was term limits?
No, it was about somebody who called you a puppet.
Oh.
Okay.
That was during term limits, I believe.
Was probably during term limits. How you feel about that? Because look, I look at you and I see that you're a woman with white shoulders, just, you know, for speaking purposes, meaning that you can stand by, you know how to play the game. There is things that you give in, there is things you don't give in. But to those that feel that way, because when somebody speaks something or says something, sometimes it's a reflection of others might think, or maybe that person wants to blend that seed on somebody else's mind. How you feel about that?
I think this lesson came to me recently when I was called another, things that I had to look up. Like, I was like, okay, what is that? I don't know. But other people's descriptions, adjectives, opinions of who I am as a person are one none of my business and do not impact what I know of myself. And one of the first things I know about myself is I'm a child of God. So if that's not what they're calling me, then it's like, okay, you're entitled to your opinion and I'm not going to argue your opinion with you. My great-grandmother always told me, a hit dog will holler. So sometimes you just let people talk. Because when you don't have anything to defend and you are confident in where you stand, you don't have to react. So I've learned to not react because another one of her sayings is, um, don't argue with the fool because from a distance, no one could tell who's who.
So right.
Yes. So I stopped arguing. And now I told, I said to my uncle the other day, he said something, my mother did, mom, if you're watching, sorry. Um, my mother said something and he's like, you didn't even react. I said, I get paid to argue. I'm not gonna argue for free, even with my, I'm just, okay, okay. So that's one thing that being council president has taught me, to just not be reactionary all the time. Not everything deserves a reaction.
And sometimes people are looking for that oxygen, that reaction.
Absolutely, absolutely. The reason why they're poking you is because they want you to react. And I found peace. When I go home, I try to leave work, at work, and have peace. And pray and realizing so many things have happened since I've been here, like the passing of my cousin with the term limits vote, my parents in the fire and losing everything, that puts life in perspective. Like, when you lose someone so close to you, you realize that some things just don't matter.
Right.
Right? When I was, this term limit vote and and when my cousin passed, like, I went to church and I'm praying, like, God, what is it that you want me to do? Because with everything of importance, I go to God and I ask for guidance. So that's why I'm not concerned about how people feel about the decisions I make. Because I I go to a higher power. But when I went to church that Sunday, the vote was Tuesday and I came home and got the phone call that my cousin and his son were in an accident. And one went to the medical center, another one went to Lawrence, and I was asked to go to Lawrence to check on my cousin. And expecting him to be fine, be banged up a bit and get there and they're shuffling me around, I'm like, okay, I'm getting nervous. They take me to a room and say, are you here alone? And I'm, now I'm like, oh my gosh, what's going on? I called my husband in the room and they tell me that my cousin didn't make it. And it hit me instantaneously, that's a term limit. I have been asking God, my, one of my close friends, Linda, um, I prayed on, she's like, I prayed with her and I, she just said, fast and pray and God will give you the answer. So the minute that they told me that my cousin didn't make it from this car accident, it was like, that's a term limit. He's not coming back. He was term limited.
He was term limited.
Right. And it's like, well, dad, I didn't want to learn the lesson like that, God, but you gave me the answer that I asked for. You gave me clarity.
God walks in mysterious ways.
Absolutely. And sometimes you learn the toughest lessons in the toughest possible ways. But I've learned that so many things in life just aren't serious as people portray them to be. So I pray, I make my decision and I stand on it.
There is a comment here from somebody, Phil Armstrongs, I don't know if you know him.
Who doesn't know Phil? I asked him to bring the hat back. He hasn't brought it back yet.
Phil, bring the hat back. Okay, now Phil says this, Lakisha has welcomed participation by the public. She's one of the seven representatives on the council and has mostly worked with the citizens and their concerns. She, like I, spend many hours at night to gain her education. With the existing group of council people who work more for special interests, it is very difficult to care for the concerns of the city of Yonkers residents. Do you agree with this?
Absolutely. And Mister Armstrong knows that, I love when he shows up. But one thing I could say that has transpired in the last three years that I've been on the council is the public engagement, which I encourage people to come out and have your voices heard. Not only that, to learn the process, like a lot of, last week or this week, Tuesday in the meeting, people were saying like, oh, Yonkers sends a lot of money to the war. And I said, that appearance would make people think that didn't know, Yonkers sends money directly to a war in the Middle East. It's like, that's not the case. When you work a job, you pay federal taxes, you pay state taxes. And what the federal and state government do with our money, they do. As an elected official, I could send a resolution and I urge you, governor, I urge you legislators, Congress, whomever, to do this. But really, we have no say in that role. So, for example, with the resolution, I felt as if I was singled out. I don't know if it was a concerted effort or not, I could have my own beliefs on it. But it's like, by myself, I can't make a decision. I need for other people. So are you advocating those other individuals to come along with your position in order to take action? Or are you singling me out because you want to paint me as something and back me in the corner? But I stand tall and firm in every decision. And when it comes to matters of international concerns, that is Congress. That is the president that has the final say in how our federal and state taxes that come out of our paychecks are spent. So it would be better or more wise to use that energy and effort lobbying your congressman, lobbying your representative from the House or the president to take up these concerns. The council, as I said, a resolution is essentially a show of support for an issue. It has no legality, it has no teeth that if you don't do what we ask, there will be consequences. So it's unfortunate that oftentimes we all can't come to some type of understanding. Maybe that's the Libra in me that always wants balance and and things to be fair, but that's.
Councilwoman, we have a comment here from Carol Conklin, Cocklin? Did I say the name correct?
Conklin.
Conklin? This is what she says. I know that you are a strong advocate for the people with disabilities. Can you share anything regarding how the city council ensuring inclusiveness and ADA accessibility? Appreciate the work being done by the city council.
Absolutely. Carol is a friend of the council and one of the most funny, um, but supportive individuals here in the city of Yonkers. And she owes us a visit because what my staff has been trying to incorporate is not only having our newsletters, being able to translate or be read by individuals with, who are visually impaired. And Carol is always saying, hey, I can read that, but I couldn't read that. And and we continuously work on ways to make City Hall more accessible. City Hall, um, the Facebook Live, whether it has post caption, we had to figure out how to get that done so that individuals could participate in city government. So thank you, Carol, for your continued advocacy on behalf of the persons with disabilities. And she teaches me, so not disabled people, it's persons with disabilities. So Carol is always, like, we were at a restaurant the other day and I was like, do you want me to grab it for you? And she's like, whoa, hello? I was like, well, listen, I'm gonna ask the question. I don't want to be offensive and assume that you want my assistance. Um, and so I I love her for that.
She corrects me sometimes.
Absolutely. She's always.
Hi, Carol. Now, before we conclude, because, you know, we have a certain amount of time, you busy, you have work to do. I want to point it out, what's coming up tomorrow, guys.
Yes.
This is coming up tomorrow.
From one to three.
Okay.
From one to three, we will have a health and wellness fair at the Nepprehand Community Center on Woburn Avenue here in the city of Yonkers. Please, it's a family event, bring the children. We will have Macaroni the Clown there, who was awesome. If you've ever seen him, Rue, hopefully you will be able to attend. We have vendors to deal with, whether it's yoga, I believe we have someone coming out. We have medical insurance, we have, I believe we have a massage person coming out. So it's all different aspects of health and wellness. And shout out to Juices for Life, who will be bringing some healthy food options and and juices for our community to learn. Because another thing that this has taught me is that you have to take care of your body. You have to listen to your body and you can't be everything for everyone when you're not a hundred percent yourself. Um, I did participate in one of their vegan events at the YWCA and for the first time tried vegan food with Pharma Cares. And it was amazing. Like, in my mind, vegan food was like tofu. It's like, why would I eat that? You know, um, but I had a mushroom, which I've never had mushrooms. When I look at, for me, textures of food mean the world. And if I don't like the texture of it, I'm not eating it. But it was mushrooms, but chicken tenders. And kale and it was just amazing, delicious food. So, and especially in the African-American community, we're always having our soul food, which is, may not be the healthiest for you. But just finding healthier options and alternatives is something that the city council and the city council president are intent on helping the residents of the city of Yonkers to live long and live healthy because your health is your wealth.
So guys, don't forget, tomorrow, April thirteenth, between one P M and three P M at the Nepprehand Community Center, three forty-two Woburn Avenue. Show up, remember, let's do more than just talk about it. Action's not worse. Let's show up and do something about it. Now that we talk about health, I'm gonna throw this at you. Through the years, you know, I've been doing this for seventeen years. I have seen breast awareness, I have seen woman awareness, I have seen this awareness, I have seen that awareness.
We're all aware.
But you wanna know, you wanna know something that I have never seen you, the council, anybody in the city hall doing?
And then let's do it. So what is it?
Men awareness. Men cancer, testicle cancer is a serious problem.
Breast cancer for men. Most people don't think that, when you think of breast cancer, you think of women. But even men get breast cancer. So I believe we will have some options for men in health awareness at this fair.
Yes, let's have a men awareness.
Men's health.
Because what happens is men, women.
Don't like to go to the doctor.
Don't like to go to the doctor. And because you don't like to go to the doctor, sometimes you get sick and you cannot reverse it. Things that could be prevented very easily.
Exactly.
Maybe we need to think about it.
Prostate exams. It's like, it's like taboo and you hear about it and you get afraid and scared. It's like, I'm not doing that. But it's important because we learn to live with issues. And it's like, oh, I have this little cough, oh, this pain. And we learn, it goes away. And you learn to live with it as if it's normal when it's probably, your body's telling you, hey, there's something going on here. And it's better to find out early and address it than to wait and, as you said, become a bigger issue than it needed to be.
So Council President, action's not work.
A collaboration for men's health, that'll be next.
Let's do that.
Absolutely.
Let's do that.
Absolutely.
On that note, we conclude our interview. And last, Council President, there is something I forgot to ask you that you wanna bring it up?
Well, we know one of the huge things that's coming up here in the city is the budget. And budget concerns, I am the budget chair. So what will happen after the mayor presents his budget, which I believe we're waiting for Albany to pass theirs. Um, we will have budget meetings. I implore the residents of the city of Yonkers to attend these budget meetings. Not only the public hearings, we'll have one public hearing here and the next one will. We'll have one public hearing here and the next one will be at Saunders. But come to the department meetings, find out what the departments are doing so that when you, and if you can, you can watch it on Facebook or City Hall TV. And and get the knowledge, get the information. I know people are busy. But it's important to know what's going on in the city to make an informed decision and have your voice heard. So the bu- the budget is one of the next biggest things going, and one of the three really jobs that the council has. So we pass laws, we do zone changes and we um either accept or reject the mayor's budget. So in the city charter, that's one of our three tasks.
Guys, get involved.
Get involved.
Get involved. That's the key thing. Get involved. Don't just sit back and engage when things get a little heated. Get involved, be aware of what's going on, take proactive instead of reactive.
That's right.
Perhaps by next year, this time, we should be talking about your campaign.
That's right. God willing.
Don't forget, when you're ready to talk about it, give me a call and let's talk about your plan.
You're right.
Now, just to con-
Go ahead.
Just to conclude this. What are in your plans for the next few months?
I was reading your mind. I was gonna answer that question before you asked it. So I am running for city council president. Not judge. Not anything else. I love what I do. I love the fact that I can maintain a full-time job and do this job as well. Any other job would require me to only have one job and I have a son who's a senior in high school right now and going to college and college is expensive. So absolutely. Thank God he got partial scholarships and we're figuring out where he's going. So that's a blessing. But I love what I do. I love the people that I get to meet and I have to give a special shout out because I went maybe three weeks ago to Riverside High School and spoke to a group of students there, Mr. Duro's class. Um, they were doing an assignment and they got to watch Brick by Brick and they also watched um Show Me a Hero. And one of their assignments was to write to their council members. And so one of the students is actually my cousin's daughter. I'm an only child, so I don't have a nephew. That's another story. But um, one of the students is my cousin's daughter, who calls me her auntie. And when they're looking at the council member, she says, hey, that's Auntie Keisha. And the teacher says, well, you have a connection. Maybe she'll come and speak with us. So after I asked my cousin, why don't your daughter know that Auntie Keisha was the council president? Um, I did go speak to the class and they were awesome and had great questions and ideas. I met Victoria and she said, when I asked them, how do you get the youth in the teens that are getting voting age engaged, she said, I listen to and I watch the Yonkers Voice. So shout out to you, Victoria, if you're watching this, comment and and let me know that you did see this. But she did say that she watches the Yonkers Voice. And Addison, when we talked about what things we'd like to see in schools, she said, I'd like to see a sculpting class. So I did tell them that I wouldn't forget about them. So those are shout outs. Now Leah, she's probably like, please, Auntie Keisha, don't mention my name.
You did.
I did, yes.
It's like, I mean, you're not supposed to ask such a question.
That's right. I'm, I'm gonna try it, just like Rue. But um Riverside class, Mr. Duro's class at Riverside High, Roosevelt High School, which of course is my alma mater, which I always love, but that's one of the highlights of the job, getting out and speaking to the youth and letting them know that people that come from the community that they come from can be, um, I give them a story that my dad, my parents were teenagers. My dad, who might be in the comments if he's not working too hard, was seventeen when he had me and my mom was sixteen. And he said that one of his teachers at Gordon High School said to him, you know your daughter's going to be a statistic. And I say, that's right, the first African-American elected citywide in the city of Yonkers.
You fulfill it.
Absolutely. Like, people think that when you come from, where you come from and you have these obstacles in your way, that life can't be great. And I'm here to say that is absolutely not true. You can be born to single parents, you can have a child early, you can have a disability. Um, lead poisoning, I had lead poisoning at five years old. And, you know, one of the stigmas of having lead poisoning is that you would be developmentally delayed. Well, here I am. Right. And so it's so many obstacles and stigmas and statistics that try to pigeonhole people and hold them back from fulfilling their dreams, goal and destiny. And I'm a walking testament to you can be anything that you want to be in life.
And so can you.
And so can you.
And so can you.
Absolutely.
Now, to finish this up, I think I said that a few times, but we're gonna say it one more time. To finish this up, I'm going to make my disclaimer that I always do. Yonkers Voice is not my voice. Yonkers Voice is the platform where your voice can be heard and where you can articulate your issues. I invite people like CCP, Council President, I invite all others. Not as a sign of endorsement, not a sign of opposition. I just give them the platform where they can come and connect with you. Yonkers Voice is the bridge between you and them, where you have, you have the opportunity to ask a question as long as that question is presented in a polite and respectful manner. Thank you for watching. Until next time.
Thank you.